We'll now call this meeting to order. If we could have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Asper.
Present.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Present.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Present.
Commissioner Venzel.
Present.
Commissioner Swartout.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Leavens.
Present.
Coram, present.
If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chairman Leavens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have our opening prayer.
Eternal Father, blessed be your matchless name. Your word says that all things work together for the good of those who love you and to those who are called according to your purpose. God, we love you and we gather to carry out the task that you have given us in order to fulfill our purpose. I pray that you intervene in this meeting, let it work for our good and for the good of the community. Amen.
Amen.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as published with a clarification of item 13 for closed session to acutely read to receive, discuss confidential legal opinion pursuant to MCL 15.268, subsection 1H.
And I would amend that to being 18, item 18.
Oh, item 18, my apology.
May I add an amendment to that? That the public be able to remain here until we vote to go into closed session.
Yes, that's what would happen anyway, so absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. A motion by Leavens is your support, supported by Lamoore. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asper.
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next approval of minutes, if we could get a motion.
Make a motion to approve and waive the reading.
Moved by Swartout, supported by Lamoore. Are there any questions, additions, corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move into our first segment of public comment. Are there citizens in the audience that wish to address the board?
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to remind all Commissioners and members of our audience of our Caregiver and Safety Summit, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, August 14th. It's at La Roy's Hall from 10 to 1. We're going to have presentations on preventing senior fraud and different things for caregiving. So everyone's welcome to come and want to let everyone know and hope to see you there.
Hi, my name's Darcy Piedmont and I live in District 2. I'm here as a registered voter, law-abiding citizen, and currently up to date with all of my taxes. And I'd like to make just three quick points, if I may, to clear up any misunderstandings that members of the board may have. So number one, I do not have representation on this board, and that's a problem. Number two, I and many of my friends and neighbors of District 2, we do have a big issue with the fact that Mark Brant has dragged us into an embarrassing and unnecessary public struggle. There's a timeline and a lot of arguments that have all been documented, they're public record, so I'm going to keep this super simple. We don't want Mark Brant serving on this board as the District 2 representative. I can speak personally to the fact that I did not approach certain members of this board to express this view earlier, and that's because I didn't believe that they were going to be taken seriously. So instead, I went to the Governor's Office, my US Senator, the Secretary of State, the Attorney General, the FBI, and legal scholars for help, and I got help. Happily, I didn't have to move forward with the recommendations that were presented to me when in February, the majority of you voted that Mark Brant removed himself from this office, from his position on the board. So thank you so much to those of you who represented me on that vote. And now we're at crossroads, and I hope that you can hear me now at this time. Please talk to your friend and your colleague if you have his confidence. Please ask him to move on now. Please ask him to put the good of the group, of our community, before himself. Put our tax, our money, my taxpayer money, to good use now. We don't need more lawsuits, we don't need angry debate, media exposure over whether or not a convicted felon should have resigned from office while serving in an out-of-state prison. There's a lot of opportunity for growth in Monroe and this county, for positive change, for forward movements. I want to see that happen. Let's not waste time, so please let's prioritize the common good. Thank you so much.
My name is Stephen Meyer from Monroe County District 6. I'm glad that there wasn't any pushback today to the closed session. There was a news story yesterday that had me concerned. And regarding closed sessions, there was a moment at the last meeting that didn't really get much attention where the inmate that was sitting on the dais had talked about knowledge of a closed session from February 4th. And the county attorney said, how do you have that knowledge? That was a closed session, you were an inmate. And the response was that I thought it was released, and it was not. There was a legal opinion letter that was released, but the deliberations that occurred during that closed session have not been released. And I have pressed for information about those deliberations, and people have not told me anything because it was a closed session. I even talked to the county attorney walking into that February 4th meeting. I said, when will we know what goes on in this closed session? And he said, never unless the board votes to release all that. And the only thing that was voted to release was the legal opinion letter. And so coming into this meeting where there's going to be another closed session, my concern is that however that information got out before could get out again and that maybe some members don't respect the bounds of a closed session. And I would like to know how that information got out before from February 4th. And I'd like some assurance that that will not happen with this meeting today because I believe the work of the independent investigator should remain independent, it shouldn't be tampered with. And I would hope all of our board members can respect the bounds of a closed session. Thank you.
Gail Kane, District 8. I watched the YouTube version of the last meeting, and as much as I have plenty to get on my soapbox about, I'm going to try to be brief. I've only got four pages. Let me understand, the law firm which had two members present at the last meeting cannot do anything unless a directive is given by this board? Did I miss the board vote at that YouTube meeting that authorized legal to move ahead in the legal proceedings to block Mr. Brant, given his immature refusals on several facets in these matters? Sadly, the southern aspect of the county also lacked representation at that last meeting. Folks, I know you're all big-time elected officials, and I applaud you for what you've done. But you have the meeting schedule ahead of time, and unless it's life and death, you should be here. Look at all the legal issues that are popping up in Texas for just such disregard for the job. And this job is important. Leaving three districts without representation at the last meeting for a very important vote that was taken. So if you can't make the obligation, please do us a favor and just don't run for the doggone office. Next point, putting the blame where it belongs. With regards to election protocol, this board needed to put the clerk to task. It is part of her statutory duties, and from what I understand of her, she is good at her job. From day one of the obvious problem and the issue that had been created, you as a board should have sought input from an out-of-county law firm. I'm not sure, but who does District 2 have for legal representation at their township meetings? The board should have taken action. Time is a critical factor in these situations, and you knew, you knew it was going to happen, so you should have dealt with it. You don't wait for tomorrow. We could all be dead by then. Nothing against the firm, but again, we pay good money for legal opinions and you disregarded them. You treated their legal opinion and their statements, giving you advice, you disregarded it. So that brings us to the answer, who's really at fault? I'm looking at you, every single one of you, each and every one on this board. So what of who knew what and when it happened? Are you going to tell me that none of you knew the history of how Mr. Brant made his money back in the day? If that sits well for his district and the people that voted him into office, so be it. However, should the sole responsibility of fixing this mess fall on the county? Those people also have an obligation, and they have the right to recall him if he's not doing the job they elected him to do. I don't want to waste my money on their problem. I can tell you corruption and deceit in this county doesn't rest in District 2 alone. We are wallowing in it in District 8. Lastly, I don't know much about many of you. I trust those that voted you in do. In my neck of the woods, it's deplorable that we lack opposition for these offices, and that's because there's an ignorance as to the job you people do. However, I am sick of hearing the boo-hoo, nobody picked me to be on the team for Red Rover at recess. Too bad. Get with the program. Sadly, you take this attitude to your committee assignments, and that makes you dangerous. That makes you dangerous for the well-being of the county. It creates, and the game that you play, a delay in executing actions in a timely matter and one that makes a big, huge impact on the well-being of the committee as a whole. So if you don't mind, let's quit pointing the fingers, quit your whining. Maybe if you were nicer about things and you would speak up and do your job, we could all do a whole lot better here. Thank you.
Duane Dobbs, District 2.
The only question I have is the same Steve asked. Why is this number one question for this board? Not how, but how did Mark Brant get the information from a sealed meeting? That's it.
Hello, Katie Beth Davis, Monroe Charter Township. I just wanted to put in the record on, on the books that Mark Brant has owned and operated several bootleg designer drug pharmaceutical companies since the 1980s. I would like to know how many county commissioners are aware of his history of drug dealing and when have they known? While he was in prison, he had the ALO Company, which was his pharmaceutical company registered out on Blue Bush Road. And as of, since he got out, the website's still no longer there. But if the investigator or any of the commissioners need any documentation or any form of receipts, including newspaper articles, Playboy ads, the list goes on and on for the advertisement of his pharmaceutical company, Designer Drugs. And the other reason why I wanted to bring that up is because this man sat on this board for how many years? We went through an opioid epidemic, we went through mental health, which we're still going through right now. And his conflict of interest in him having all these shell corporations, all these people that mule for him, and if what I'm saying is not true, I would highly encourage him to sue me because the amount of discovery I have is enough to do some damage. So, thank you.
Any other citizens that wish to address the board?
Bill Lavoie, 225 Maywood, Monroe, Michigan, 48162. My comments are mostly about the last meeting, and I think that there's some issues that some others have already pointed out about a closed session and, you know, whether the administration gave him information or any of the other commissioners gave him information. Admit it, right? You could admit it and resign, or maybe the prosecutor, he was here last meeting. I don't see him here this meeting, I don't think. Maybe spring charges because that's a violation. So that's the first one. Second one is, we're a firearms sanctuary county, right? Many on this board voted for that. Still cannot bring a concealed weapon into this room during a public meeting. I always ask when I go through on whether there's a court in session. There's court in session because that's what, how I understand the rule is. You may also have another one, but I think that's an issue that also needs to be addressed at some point in the future once some of this other stuff is, is done. I support the closed session piece first, right, as a citizen, with hopefully some public release of documents after the closed session. Especially if Mark Brant, the citizen, is getting that information, we all should get that information. Much like when he sat at the last meeting in front of a computer monitor in a nicer chair than the public has over here, being able to see it and getting different information. The agenda is a little bit different that you guys see. It's not a big substantive issue from what I've saw, the difference between what was on the screens versus what's on these screens. But if the information is different, I believe that's a violation of Open Meetings Act also. So I think with some of this, the best way to proceed is if somebody, if any of this information is being released to any member of the public, it should be released to all members of the public. Thank you.
Are there other citizens that wish to address the board?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Danielle Hoover. I'm a resident of the city of Mylan, Monroe County, 48160, District 2, and I'm speaking as a citizen only. I'm not representing Wasna County, Wasna County Community Mental Health, Pure Psychiatry of Michigan, or the Michigan Board of Social Work. And with that said, I am the Democratic candidate for District 2, and I'd like to be in that seat, so please vote for me today. And I think someone who is appropriately qualified needs to be in that seat, and that person can be me. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shawna Farley, and I'm from Jay Heslerings, District 4, District. And I just have some statements and then think on your own. Where's the legal justification to reverse your own removal decision? Because friendship is not a legal defense. If Mr. Brant lost his voter registration while being incarcerated, how does that meet the basic requirement to hold office? Are you willing to ignore this just because you know him? How can this board claim ethical standards with one of its own defied removal and re-entered county systems? Is that behavior you're willing to validate? What message did you send to your constituents who expect accountability and lawful governance? Are we rewriting the rules for insiders? Will you set a precedent that felony convictions can be shrugged off if a person is politically connected? That's not public service, that's corruption. You have a duty not to Mr. Brant but to Monroe County voters. If you reinstate him against sound legal advice, you're choosing loyalty over law, politics over principles, and power over people. I urge you to stand for something better, uphold the removal, restore the public's faith, lead with integrity. Every day Monroe residents face background checks, paperwork, and judgments every time they apply for things like a job or housing. This elected official can avoid all of that, even if they're currently serving time. This has allowed Mark Brant to flourish through deception. How is the board going to actively support the everyday residents, the ones who are struggling to find a job and housing? Where's the agenda for that? Mr. Brant is disqualified. I spent my time back in the corner talking to some of you when I first came here. Very nice people. I was told when I asked why that it was about pride and power. And that sticks with me, and I think we all know, it's very hard to give that up. Now I know I won't get Dawn Asper's vote, but what I'm going to tell you is, she also came up to me and gave her number because she was interested in how to open a dispensary and what the profit margin. And yes, you did, I got your number. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens who wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions, special tributes, and presentations. Item 1, presentation of the Annual Implementation Plan for Area Agency on Aging 1B for the fiscal year 2025 by Ms. Stephanie Carpenter-Hall, Director of Planning and Advocacy. Could we, could we get a motion first and then we'll listen to her presentation? Moved by Hoffman, supported by Leavens. Now we'll listen to your presentation.
Great, and I think the presentation's getting pulled up real quickly. Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Carpenter, and I am the Director of Planning and Advocacy at Ageways, formerly Area Agency on Aging 1B. Today I'm presenting the Fiscal Year 2026 Annual Implementation Plan. Just for some background, our service area consists of six counties: Livingston, Monroe, Macomb, Oakland, St. Clair, and Wasna. Our region is both urban and rural, with three counties, St. Clair, Wasna, and Monroe, receiving millage support. So creation of this plan is on administration of Aging Community Living and Supports Bureau requirement. And this plan outlines our plans for spending state and federal funds, so this does exclude Medicaid funding and also our goals for the upcoming fiscal year. In our region, we serve close to 30% of the state's older adult population, which is over 750,000 older adults aged 60-plus. This region is very diverse, with 12% of older adults identifying as non-white or multiracial, and 8% of older adults in our region living at or below 150% of poverty. All six counties in our region have multiple food desert areas and all have Opportunity Zone census tracts, and all have, are designated medically as underserved areas or have medically designated underserved areas. So far in fiscal year 25, our clinical program has enrolled an additional 81 older adults each month compared to the previous year, and also reduced our waitlist by 61%. Also in the past year, we've added some new programs. These include things like Adaptive Wellness, our independent program, which is our PERS, those buttons that you see a lot. Those are, that was a new program we established as well, along with our Family Respite Program. Ageways has also hired a consultant to evaluate the effectiveness of our Congregate Meal Program and find ways to increase participation. This ultimately led to identifying an opportunity to add more restaurant voucher programs in our region, which we look forward to continuing in the upcoming years. Also, our platform True Alta has continued to be utilized by caregivers throughout the region, serving close to 150 caregivers since, as of March. For fiscal year 25, advocacy was also successful in securing additional $3 million statewide to support the Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program, which ultimately positively affects our region. Ageways continues to work on the Caregiver Respite Voucher Program, which provides respite vouchers to caregivers to purchase care. This is funded by the Health Endowment Fund as well as Ralph C. Wilson, and has to date assisted over 150 caregivers. Also, Ageways has launched a multi-month television ad campaign to increase awareness of resources that are available to support caregivers, and recently won an award for one of these videos. Looking forward into fiscal year 26, our priorities include continuing to support family caregivers through the Caregiver Respite Voucher Program, implementing bingo size in place of our Aging Mastery Program, which is an evidence-based community program that combines bingo, education, and exercise. Also, in fiscal year 26, we will launch a new behavioral health counseling program to support older adults facing mild to moderate mental health challenges. And in fiscal year 26, we will continue to provide the great services that we have in the past such as care management, information and assistance, options counseling, among the others that are on the screen. So in the development of this plan, we also had to hold some stakeholder engagement sessions to get some feedback on this plan. We received various written and spoken comments through that public hearing process. Various themes noted here are things like that transportation options are limited, senior centers are a meaningful place for older adults to receive information, the overall importance of kinship care programs and just resources for caregivers, and finally, concerns over funding for these programs. I also want to highlight in our region the network of community partners that we utilize to provide these great services. In our region, we continue outreach to minority and underserved populations with a goal of increasing awareness and access. We also added a new objective to our fiscal year 26 to strengthen relationships with Arabic and Hispanic populations in our region. And we continue many of those great partnerships that are listed on the screen, and we've also expanded within the past year and look to expand moving forward. This includes things like expanding our work with veterans by partnering with Detroit and Ann Arbor Veterans Affairs to provide services. We also further our relationships with local press to get that information out to the community. And we've also developed some relationships with local hospitals, skilled nursing facilities, and as well as health plans. So thank you for the opportunity to present the Ageways Fiscal Year 26 Annual Implementation Plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Asper.
I would just say that, and I'm on this board, meaning the Ageways Board, you do extraordinary work, and that entire board is wonderful to work with, and I'm going to recommend that we approve this, but I didn't want to make that motion yet until you called for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes, I just have a question. When the in-home care, who actually administrates that? I see a large number. How do they, a senior go about doing that? Just curious.
So the care is provided by our community partners. So while they start with us, and you know, we do the screenings and see if they qualify, the partners that we have out in the community provide those services. But then we have people on staff that coordinate those services. So do the assessment to figure out what resources they need and also reassess them as well if their needs change.
That all goes right straight, directly through you folks?
Sorry, what was that?
That goes directly through you folks.
Yeah, it starts with us, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Obviously not, you know, ones that we fund, not every, but yes.
It's been made. It's been supported too, but additional comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heinzerling.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore.
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Asper.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a municipal corporate resolution outlining certain authorities and assurances as a condition of the release of proceeds from the life insurance policy of Linda Dudler. Could I get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Lamoore, supported by Heinzerling. Mr. Resonick, do you want to explain this a little bit, or?
Sure. This is unique, Commissioners. Sadly, Ms. Dudler passed away. Upon her passing, in her will, she bequeathed to the Sheriff's Office, to the K-9 Unit, certain proceeds from her estate. In talking with John Hancock Company, the life insurance company, In talking with John Hancock Company, the life insurance company, there are certain conditions that they want met from the county as an assurance that the money that she bequeathed to the county would go to a restricted fund for use in the K-9 Division and those uses, and also required that an official with the county at the corporate level, as well as the sheriff, and the officer in charge of that, be part of the resolution. We think that we've complied with all of the requirements from the John Hancock Life Insurance Company, and that was the purpose for me drafting the corporate resolution. Chief Deputy Predmore and Sheriff Goodenough have both looked at that. We believe, based on our conversations and what we've received from the insurance company, it is proper, and so it's before you tonight to approve it. If the board approves it, Chairman, you would execute it, the sheriff would execute it, and Chief Deputy Predmore would execute it, and we would then send it to the insurance company, hopefully satisfying their requirements to release those proceeds. And so in the resolution, we've set up the fund that we have, it's restricted for the K-9 Division for those uses.
Thank you, Mr. Basanik. Are there questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number three, performance resolution outlining agreements between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the County of Monroe. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore.
Second.
Supported by Huffman. Are there questions on this motion? Yes, Commissioner Asper.
Was this the one that was about license plate readers?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And I would just comment that I'm not really for license plate readers. I had a patient who actually got a call from the, from the center that actually collects that data, and it was a relative of hers asking her what she was doing in the Walmart parking lot in Canton. And so I really wish that there was a way to do license plate readers where it only collected the data on the person with the warrant or whatever, as opposed to just everybody's information and that being transmitted. The other thing is, I'm a bit concerned about our law enforcement, because when you're specifically stopping these people, you don't necessarily know who is driving the car, and there've been a lot of, you know, serious injuries that have happened as a result of this screening. So I just want to make people aware of that, that, that all of their data, when they go through that intersection, is collected along with everybody else's, and it is, you know, it is actually stored somewhere.
Additional questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number four, resolution to stop the automatic renewal of Administrator Chief Financial Officer contract of employment on February 16, 2026, and in subsequent years, such that the contract would provide for a fixed year ending at the close of February 16, 2028. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore.
Support.
Supported by Swartout. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now moving into finance matters. Item number one, payment of the August 6, 2025 accounts payable current claims report in the amount of $1,025,019.98. Could I get a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore, supported by Huffman. Now, I'll turn it over.
Good evening. On page number one, vendor number 30009 CDW, Government Inc., scheduled computer replacements at Michigan Works. Vendor number 50565, Aerie Welding and Mechanical, its boiler replacement at the Paulus House facility. On page number two, vendor number 80017, Habitat for Humanity of Monroe, its electronics recycling paid through the Solid Waste Fund. Vendor number 132619, Monroe County Salvation Army, contractual services provided through the Community Corrections Grant, and also the Opioid Settlement Fund. Page number three, vendor number 140499, Northern Concrete Pipe, drain project costs paid through the Drain Commission. Vendor number 190200, Salamander Technologies, its emergency management software paid through the U.S.C. grant. And on page number four, vendor number 510855, Title Check LLC, contractual services provided to the Property Tax Foreclosure Fund, and that's the end of my list.
Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number two, letter dated July 18, 2025, from Mr. Jesse Stanford, Monroe County Treasurer, submitting the cash and investment report for the quarter that ended June 30, 2025. Could I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Moved by Huffman, supported by Lamoore. We'll turn it over to Jesse.
All right, good evening. I'll just make this real quick. I have three points I want to bring up about the, about quarter two with the, with our investments. So as I like to highlight, the general fund was split between 11 different financial institutions throughout the quarter. This is pretty typical with what we have, but it highlights the diversity that we have with the portfolio. The Federal Reserve's May and June meetings left the targeted interest rate the same over quarter one. So as a result, I've been able to provide similar rates of interest for the different investments we have because of that. And while our investment policy allows us to go out three years, we typically only have things going out about a year, and that has been beneficial lately because of what they call the inverse yield curve, whereas we're going out over time, the rate is going down. So if anyone has any questions, I do my best to answer them.
Other questions?
Yeah, what's our interest now? What are we making you think about? We're not hitting five in anything, are we?
No, no, it's, we're closer to four, 3.75 on most investments, depending on what it does.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under consent agenda, approval of nonclaims. Item A, check registered dated July 18, 2025, in the amount of $647,155.09. B, check registered dated July 25, 2025, in the amount of $277,762.61. And item C, check registered dated August 1, 2025, in the amount of $671,749.12. Could I get a motion, please? Moved by Swartout.
Second.
Supported by Lamoore. Are there questions on approval of the nonclaims? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, under Communications, item one, letter dated July 30, 2025, from Mr. Chris Westover, Environmental Health Director, requesting approval to accept the Scrap Tire Cleanup Grant Award in the amount of $19,000 from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy Eagle. There is no match required for this grant. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Levens, supported by, supported by Commissioner Asper. I will turn it over.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So, we appreciate the approval to accept this money. I just want to give a quick update on the program itself. And the first question is, is where all these tires come from, right? It's pretty amazing. We have four events this year. The last one just got done last week. We started in April, May, June, July, and in total, we collected over 6,000 tires in those four events. It's obviously a very well-received program. And these are all passenger tires, so these are not personal passenger tires. So most of the time, they're discarded in a county drain or illegally dumped, for example, not in July but in June. The city of Luna Pier, not a very big municipality, right, brought us 343 tires just in that event. We worked with the mayor and the sheriff's office. That was some illegal dumping. We typically don't like to take that many. We do have a limit of 10 per vehicle. The simple reason for that is, is we don't want businesses, shops, things like that, that are profiting off changing tires to bring us 50 or 100 or things like that. So I do want to give a shout out to Sheriff Goodenoff, who's here. He provides, our office organizes this, and with the Drain Office and his office, but the sheriff provides us with the, literally the people that are doing the dirty work. Imagine all, you know, 1,500 tires coming out in each event that have to be loaded on a trailer that are coming from a ditch, a drain, a park, wherever it might be. They're nasty, they're dirty, they're filled with water, mosquitoes, leaves, things like that. So Sheriff Goodenoff, thank you for the help with that, and I will entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Do you know what that stuff's going for?
Yeah, so they repurpose it for a few different reasons. They use it, cement-making plants use it when they're creating the product so it can create more heat. They're now using it in asphalt, which makes the asphalt last longer. And then, as all of you know, it's being used in a lot of playgrounds or field. I live in Monroe Township myself, they just put up a nice new playscape, I think, last year sometime, and when you walk on it, it's just that very rubbery material. They use it for that, ball fields, so on, so forth.
Yeah, I was just curious, because with my type of business, we visit the landfills often, and a lot of times, we see big push-off 100-yard trailers pushing tires off up there, and I'm just curious.
We wish, you know, we wish that wouldn't happen. There are, there are places to get rid of them. The ones that we, the ones that we take are shipped to the west side of the state, and I think most of them are in southeast Michigan where they're further processed and dispersed for, for other reasons, but disappointing to hear that you're seeing loads going into a landfill, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Levens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, letter dated July 23, 2025, from Chairman Venzel, transmitting the recommended reappointment, Robert Neely, to the Monroe County Retiree Healthcare Board of Trustees for a term commencing July 31, 2025, and expiring July 31, 2028. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Huffman, supported by Lamoore. Are there questions or comments on this motion?
I had a question. In the, in the past, we would put this out to the public for applications and possible candidates. Is there a reason why we didn't do that with this position?
I, I, well, I can, he's done, he's been doing it for a long time. He has a wealth of knowledge and wealth of experience in this area, and I felt very comfortable with this appointment. Commissioner Asper.
Yes, I would have a question on that line, is that we have been going in a direction of trying to include the community to be able to serve on these boards, and at this point, I really feel like I would like to offer a different action on this, that maybe we postpone this to the next meeting and be able to post this for the community. Yes, he is very qualified. He did banking previously. The financial markets have changed. I just think that we need, we have, you know, some very qualified people in the community who may want to serve. The other thing is that I really feel like if we include the community, like we have been in the recent past, that we, you know, we allow them to kind of have some ownership in our boards. We seem to kind of recycle our, our board people a lot of times, and I think that that could lead to an appearance to the public, that we're just kind of a good old boy system where you have to be on the inside in order to be on a board. The other thing is, I do serve on this board, sounds like I serve on a lot of boards, doesn't it? But I do serve on this board, and we have reached our goal. We have fully funded, which is a rare thing for any of these trusts, but we have fully funded it largely, I would say, because Mr. Basanik had us fund it at the beginning of each year rather than just smaller amounts quarterly, so that got us to that goal. So I would really like to see that board ultimately dissolved, but it takes a period of time because you have to report to the IRS and these, you know, different boards before you do anything like that. So that would be at least two to four months out. But I'm a small, a small government person, and I feel that when we reach our goals, that the Commissioners should move on to other tasks, and I would just like to see that posted for the, for the public. I think that would be the best thing as far as our board, our appearance before the public and our inclusion of them. And I would actually, because I would like to see the board dissolved, I would like to see somebody that has maybe an actuary background, because it's a lot about projections, and so we have to take care of these people that have their healthcare, that are retired from our county, and we want to make sure that those, that would be really the best probably tool for us to be able to go, go forward planning on that.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Huffman.
Just on behalf of Mr. Neely, he's an outstanding person, the job he's doing for the county, we're fortunate to have him, because we couldn't afford to have a director doing what he does. And he does make the county a lot of dollars through getting it managed out there the right way. And he's, he comes high standard in my book.
Commissioner Asper.
And I would say that he's very qualified that way, but there are other people in the community who also are, and I would, I, I don't want to go there, but when we had our organizational meeting, there were some things that occurred that were very troubling and concerning to me.
I would agree. I would agree. Additional comments or questions?
Commissioner Asper, were you making a motion of some kind?
No, the motion has been made.
A different, a different action, that we take a different action to postpone this and post it for the community first.
Mr. Graiman, Mr. Graham?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say that she was talking about postponing this action. We have a motion that's been first made and seconded. Now, her, if you consider that a motion to postpone, like a motion to table, if there were a second, and I don't know, maybe Commissioner Moore wants to second it, then we would have to take that motion up first, and then go to the next, go back to the first motion.
Okay.
So if there's a second, which I, I haven't heard one yet.
I'm just not clear on what the motion was, then. Were you making a motion to table?
Well, I wasn't sure if I could make it at that time when there was a motion on the, on the floor.
Yes.
But I was, okay. Well, I am just asking that we take a different action on this, as opposed to just approval or nonapproval, but rather to postpone this decision until we were able to post this for the community, and just make sure that if there's someone who has that interest, and that could be, you know, they actually put out a resume and everything, they write what their qualifications are, they can be interviewed, and that's what we've been doing, you know, for this past couple of years.
I just want to be clear, council, you're saying really, with a motion on the floor, the only action that could override that would be a tabling, not?
Table or postpone.
Or postpone.
Postpone is just like a table. The only difference is a postpone is like to a, usually to a date circuit, as opposed to an indefinite tabling, so.
I would second that motion, then.
Okay, now I'll open it up for questions and discussion.
I'd just make one quick comment. In all of the challenges that the county is facing, this is one of those that's not. This is one of the brighter aspects of our governance, that we have something that's working, is doing well. By Commissioner Asper's own comments, almost fully funded, great wisdom, you end that plan, it's implementation, and I just, like any person of, you know, reasonless would, would say, why fix what isn't broken? So that's just why I'm going to oppose the request to postpone this. We have something working, let's enjoy it.
I guess my comment to that would be the worst-case scenario is absolutely no one applies, and you end up with the same candidate, and why not see who's out there? The argument, well, it's going pretty well, so we don't want to open it up to the public, just doesn't hold any water for me. At the very least, he waits another two weeks or 30 days before he's appointed, but in the meantime, we open it up to the public, we see what candidates are out there, like we have done in the past, and at that time, we make a decision. I don't, I would never argue against opening something to the public, in my opinion.
Commissioner Hoffman?
I thought the chair had that authority. Didn't you make the appointment? You're our chair, so I don't know how we can wobble it.
I did, and just for clarification on Commissioner Asper's point that some questionable behavior took place in the, in the forming of leadership for this particular committee, there was some questionable actions taken. None of those questionable actions were taken by Mr. Neely. He was, he was the innocent victim of these questionable actions, so. Commissioner Asper?
I was actually at the meeting, and I was not called to be asked what happened at the meeting, if you would like to go there, which I was trying not to go there.
You went there, you went there.
No, I didn't.
So I'm just clarifying.
Trust me, I did not go there. Trust me.
Well, if there are no additional comments, well, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
No.
Commissioner Lamoore?
No.
Commissioner Venzel?
No.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
No.
Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Motion does not carry.
I would like to have a vote.
You didn't call Commissioner Asper?
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Asper!
Yes.
Okay. Now we are three and four. Motion does not carry.
So now we'll go back to the original motion. If there are no additional questions or comments, I will call the roll.
Commissioner Asper?
Okay, so this is voting on?
Accepting it.
The appointment, the reappointment of Robert Neely to the retiree healthcare board.
Okay, you're just supposed to state the motion.
We did already.
Okay, I say.
We did already.
No, no, right before we vote.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. I am voting no.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, letter dated July 31, 2025, from Michael Bassonic, county administrator, CFO, and Jeff McBee, human resources director, recommending retaining Foster Swift as labor counsel. Could I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion to accept the communication, place it on file, to approve the recommendation of retaining Foster Swift as labor counsel, with the additional provision that, that contract comes up every year for a reapproval annually.
Second. Moved by Leavens, supported by Lamoore. Are there questions or comments on this motion?
I guess I would just wonder how we arrived at this firm, whether we can get that from the chairman or the CFO?
Yes, we did it with an expanded representation for the committee or the panel, whatever, however you want to phrase it. I asked for representation from a lot of the different co-employers and departments. We have representation from law enforcement, we have representation from the drain commissioner, representation from the county clerk. I, I served on this committee also, and so we did try to broaden the representation. There was an interview process where we interviewed the two finalist firms, and following the interview process, we reconvened and had a debrief to go over scores and to listen to comments made by those that participated in the process, and, and reached consensus that this was the, the firm that we wanted to recommend. We also, also reached consensus that the, the other finalist, if for some reason Foster Smith didn't, didn't accept it, that we would start the interview process over again.
Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Asper?
I would think that these firms, you know, if this is going to be a year-to-year thing, most businesses want to do a little bit of a longer-term plan in what they're doing. The other concern I have is that they be allowed to do the negotiations for these various six, I believe we have 16 unions that we negotiate with, without, without, I don't know how I want to say this, but I think that if we're going to hire them as negotiators, we should allow them to complete their expertise for our county.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on, we have no public hearing. Is there any old business that the Board of Commissioners wants to take up? Seeing none, new business. We now enter into the second phase of public comment. Are there citizens who would wish to address the board?
Gail Kane, District Eight. I just shuddered all over again. To begin with, this last dealing here with this person, wasn't this topic on the agenda meeting? I mean, I'm not that familiar with how you guys do stuff. The key to this is what is the policy? Don't you have policies and procedures in place? Why should it be, and it sounded very whiny and very petty, and I'm sorry, Mrs. Asper, you were accusatory of that gentleman. You claimed he did horrible things. If I was him, I'd come after you. I'd sue you. You slandered him in front of everybody, including the county. And if you're going to dissolve the committee, why do you have to start from the bottom and rework that whole program? I'm sorry, it's unacceptable, it really is. As far as these flock cameras, I have been told otherwise. We had a huge presentation given down at South County at our DDA meeting for these flock cameras and why they're so important. And we have four of them, and they are expensive, and you do know and are aware of the county, Lucas County, in dealing with these cameras. If these license plate readers are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, or people other than police departments have the ability to read them, then I believe this county board has an obligation to the Monroe County people to put a block on these and not allow them to be put in place at all, anywhere in this county. Now that's something you need to take up with the sheriff, but it was implied that a non-police person got to view the videos and then called out a person who was seen on these cameras. That's not the understanding I got from it. And I'm not certain how much crime has been stopped. The sheriff has the response to that, the people from the flock cameras have a response to that, but if this is actually what is happening, this board owes the people of this county action to stop these cameras from going up, the removal of the ones that are up, or at least restrict where they are put. So it's a topic that needs to be discussed. Again, I want to thank all of you for doing the job that you do. The problem is, is that there should be a clear understanding of what is conflict and not conflict before you're put onto your assignments. And I'm not saying that everybody from Tom, Dick, and Harry, or some little protester out stomping their feet and throwing a fit, are suited for these seats. You really have to have some institutional and historical knowledge of this county before you can take one of these seats. It's important, and that's sad. People do not understand the authority and the power that you people have sitting in these seats, and we rely on you. So all I ask is that please keep doing your very best, and I appreciate the work of all of you. Thank you.
Any other citizens who wish to address the board?
Good afternoon, Sheriff. I'll clear up any misconception and highlight things related to flock, then you can make a decision based on the information I share with you, whether you think they're a valuable resource. Week ago, we had 11 crimes committed in Frenchtown Township in the city of Monroe by one group of individuals. A flock camera identified that individual group by the car in Bull's Harbor, and these crime spree, and let me back up, involved multiple crimes, just not the 11 that we apprehended them for that morning. Involved a pursuit from La Pleasanton 75 to north of Flat Rock, and we solved 11 crimes. Two auto thefts, multiple attempted auto thefts, larceny from vehicles, and two business breaking and entering, just one. Yesterday, for those that you may or may not know, we had a shooting in Bedford Township. We had a description of the motorcycle. I was on scene within 10 minutes. We identified the offender, we took him in custody, not within 10 minutes, we identified him, but we took him within, into custody before we left that scene and recovered the fire. I can tell you countless times where we've identified offenders and we solve criminal activity. In respect to the information sharing, there's a reason I, as your sheriff, is the only one that can sign the agreement with flock, as does Lucas County Sheriff Navarre, is because it's protected information, it can only be shared with law enforcement, it can be not, it cannot be sold, it can be not be shared with a private individual, or it is a felony under the government, federal government guidelines. So if anybody thinks that the information is being shared with the general public, that is not true. The information is shared for 30 days and is purged from the system in the cloud, unless I, as the sheriff, choose to save that information on our server, at which time every 30 days is audited. Following that, any information that is run through that system, and if a deputy or anybody queries that information, we audit who's doing it and we track it again every 30 days. We have a very robust policy, and I will tell you, this is the best system, and unless you folks are ready to fund another 100 deputy sheriffs, the small investment you're making in flock is doing its job very efficiently.
Just wanted to say that with the whole Mark Brant situation, a big point that we're all trying to make is transparency and the involvement in the public. And you all just had the opportunity, and I can't even believe I'm saying that, I was agreeing with Mr. Moore and Mrs. Asper, that yes, these appointments should be open to the public. You guys work for the public. We are the public. The reason why we're here is because there has been such a lack of transparency, a lack of anything. It is a good old boys' club. I know nobody wants to address that. I thank you for bringing it up, because we say it all the time. You guys are an entire board of cis, white Republicans, okay? We can't even get an Epstein list released, and we're here, just can't even get a simple board appointment to go for the public. I couldn't even believe that where we are right now, we guys could have had the opportunity to do that, and it wasn't. So I'm just very shocked and disappointed with this whole thing. I know I already spoke earlier about Mark Brant's involvement since the 80s, and you guys have all worked with him for how long, and sheriffs related to him, like, all these different things that, you know, all these different things that the average person looking on the outside, this doesn't look like a very effective board for our community. So that's all I just wanted to say, thank you.
Are there any other citizens who wish to address the board?
Bill Avoy, 225 Maywood, Monroe, Michigan, 48162. Two things, all this discussion on board appointments, and I believe that at the last meeting, Mr. Brant made an assertion that he actually acted as a commissioner by making some appointments. So I don't know if those were open to the public. I'm a little mixed on that, because if you have a good person on the board, you may want to continue that. But there were two appointments, from, from my knowledge, that were made, and I wonder about the validity of those. That's the first one. The second one is, recently there was a letter distributed at a Monroe County Community College board meeting, and there were five commissioners who signed on to the letter as commissioners. And one of my things that I don't like is when people use their, their office for some of this stuff and/or county resources for some of this stuff, as was done back originally before the sentencing of Mr. Brant by the administration, or at least a member of the administration, as well as some others who are no longer part of the administration. But my point is this, I, you know, there's eight of you here, five of you sign on to that. It's kind of interesting to me that, you know, that's a majority of you. Hopefully, when the issue that was brought up in the letter, the issues, I should say, are resolved, hopefully the Community College Board won't come back and say, hey, you know, you have this ethics issue going on here, we're not going to support the county in anything they do until you, until the county gets this done. That's the first point with it. And then the second point is, maybe, or hopefully, if the Community College decides to do a millage request for whatever it is, maybe this board will then do some kind of resolution, as you've done with one resolution about a sanctuary of county, there was another resolution done recently about Public Act 233 at the state level, and maybe there'll be something that'll come forth from this board about that, too. So thank you for your time.
Are there any other citizens who wish to address the board?
Devin Rucker, City of Monroe. I'm going to end on a high note. Here representing the development group, we're a marketing advertising firm here in the county, and I had the chance to spend some time in Commissioner Heinzerling's district. We are currently working on a recruitment video for Frenchtown Fire. I initially said, like, all right, I'll spend four hours with you guys, but no action happened. So that turned into, what are you guys doing for lunch? And that turned into, what are you guys doing for dinner? And before you know it, I called my wife, I said, hey, pack me a bag. They, they've got an open cot here. So I had the chance to spend 24 hours with Frenchtown Fire, and I just got to give a shout out to Shift C, firefighter Holly, Kearney O'Guys, Smigelski, and Chief Stevens. Your residents are a little safer when they go to sleep, yes, because of all the entire firefighters, but that shift especially. The way they spoke to the residents, from an elderly grandma to a woman with autism to, excuse me, Down Syndrome, to even a traffic accident. A lot of talk of, you know, we work really well with other municipalities. I got to see that. There was a fire in Elizabeth Woods just two days ago. You had Ash, Berlin, even the younger firefighters representing Frenchtown, the way that they kind of embrace some of the newbies, or I guess they're called probies, I don't know if you guys knew that term. I'm kind of hip to my fire lingo now, but, like I said, just a big credit where it's due guy. And for my family that lives in Frenchtown, I'm definitely an ambassador now of, hey, when you put your head down, if this crew comes in, you're going to be okay. So once again, for what it's worth, give them a pat on the back, it's a hard job, and I'm just glad I don't have to do it. Thank you, guys.
Any other citizens who wish to address the board? Seeing none, we have no announcements. We'll now move into members' time. Commissioner Moore?
What did I have? Well, yeah, we forgot to change it to move members' time after closed session, but we're going to be having a vote on a closed session for the independent investigation. I'll be a no vote on that. I do want it public. I just don't see any legal justification for that. We're not impending litigation. We've been talking about transparency for the last six, seven, eight months, especially since Chairman Venzel took over in January, and I'll tell you what, it pains me, too, to agree with Katie Beth Davis, but you know, broke clock right twice a day, so maybe that's where we're meeting up. But we've just had a lack of transparency week after week, month after month, and this is just another thing to where we're saying, well, let us look at all the information, and then we'll tell you, public, what we're going to give you on this situation. And we spent taxpayers' dollars, money to investigate it. I think the public and the taxpayer and the constituents should know about it, and I would like it to be public. Other than that, I appreciate the sheriff explaining the flock cameras. I could not believe, I just posted today how quickly you found the alleged shooter in my area. So I appreciate that, using technology to your advantage, you know. And Stephen Meyer, who I don't know if he's still here or not, but he's there, you know, we agree on some things, disagree probably on a lot of things, but you've been saying for months, you know, I want to know what's in a closed session. session. I'll never know. How did Mark get that information? All these different things. Well, if it's in closed session, and you come up to me and go, what'd you guys talk about? I can't tell you. The public, my constituents come up to me and go, oh, I know there's an investigation going on. What'd you learn? Sorry, I can't tell you what we talked about. We voted to go into closed session. So it really puts me at a disadvantage when I have constituents of Monroe County coming up to me and asking me, what's going on? And I go, sorry, can't talk about it. But we'll, we'll let you know when we release what information we want you to know at a later date. I just don't agree with that. I'm, you know, disagree with my framing, but that's where my mind sets on it. Other than that, I'm glad to see that the fair was a great success. Looked like we had record attendance. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Swartout?
I'll pass.
Commissioner Lamore?
Yeah, I'd just like to rebut what Commissioner Moore, regarding the closed session. There are certain things that we can talk about in the, due to the Open Meetings Act. There are certain things we cannot talk about in the Open Meetings Act. And some of those things are contained, I believe, in this information that's going to be divulged to us, only us. And I, I think we, we need to give it credence to the legal aspect of this. Otherwise, we have an option of getting sued by somebody, which, which puts us in further problems, which I don't think are necessary. So I, I really do think that being in a closed session is, is necessary to disseminate what was going to be presented to us first, before it gets out to the public. That way, we can not be legally challenged with the information that's presented to the public. Flock cameras, thank you, Sheriff. I appreciate your information on that. I was presented those same Flock cameras when I was in city council in the city of Monroe. Just another tool in the tool chest for the law enforcement agencies, and, and proof's positive by what just happened here. Worth every penny just by what you did this past weekend. Absolutely approve them, 100%, and great things. So you'll always get our approval for those. Thank you very much.
Mr. Heinzerling?
Like Devin said, Frenchtown's like a family. Sheriff's out there, they know how Frenchtown Fire works and everybody. I mean, stand-up guys in there. Thanks, everybody coming out. That's all.
Mr. Asper?
Yes, and I very much respect our sheriff. And I was really talking about traveling license plate readers, not things that are, you know, it's the traveling ones that are a problem sometimes. So I don't want to contradict you, and that's why I voted for it, so I was not voting against that. For Mr. Lamore, we do have a code of ethics now. It was made like this really important thing a few months ago, but the board didn't go forward on that. And so therefore, I put together a code of ethics that was based on the National Association of Counties, and we did adopt that. So we do have a working one, but I really would like to see one that is specifically with Monroe's handprint on it. Also, to Ms. Farley, when you spoke with us early on, we, I actually thought you were a regular citizen, that you were not, I didn't know you were an officer of the Democrat Party and so forth, but I most certainly didn't talk you about starting a dispensary. I'm actually a chiropractor, and I have a full script dispensary, which is food supplements. It has nothing to do with a dispensary like what you're talking about. Perhaps if you had called me when I gave you my phone number, perhaps you could have clarified that. But to accuse me here or to, to imply that I was doing something that people would not be approving of, you probably should have called me first to get that clarified. Let's see. I agree, oh, actually, this is Commissioner time. Okay. I would agree with Commissioner Moore about this closed session. From the very beginning of all of this, it was all about transparency. And we actually can do our own investigations. We can actually call people. The, the chairman can do subpoenas and so forth. We just have to go through the circuit court. But it was decided by this board that we were going to spend taxpayer money to do this. So I really feel when the taxpayers pay for this, that, that whatever is, you know, coming up should be transparent. We also don't see all of the guidelines of, of a special, you know, like a closed session. I do not believe that we meet those criteria. And so I just feel like, as far as the transparency, I mean, we can't have, we can't have our attorney talk to us during that time because that has to be recorded. This person could just say, whatever, and, and we couldn't hold them to that because it wouldn't be recorded. But the information that you mentioned, Commissioner Lamore, is more information than I was given about what would be in this closed session. So I'm not really sure during the agenda time that maybe some of us were informed of what was actually going to be explained. But we, I don't want us sanitizing, organizing whatever the information that's coming to us. I don't think that's the purpose of a closed session, and so I will probably be a no. Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
I want to thank everybody for coming out. Thank you, Sheriff, for that program, because we sure do need it. We sure do need it. Because there's a lot going on out there that we need to go handle, and you're doing a great job on it. And we are transparent. I don't, you can call us a bunch of crooks or whatever up here, but we are transparent. I mean, we got a couple people, we got a couple people on the board that think we're doing everything backwards in the backwoods, but that's not true. We're transparent. There's a few things that got wobbly over the years. I've been sitting up there for 15 years now. I know it's time for Young Blood, which probably is going to happen next election. But the only way you can make a difference, when the election comes up, come on, put your name on the ballot and get up here. That's all you can do to make a difference. And you can make a difference. Us little old people, I got stuff cleared to Washington over these years. I got bills in line up to Lansing. So there's a lot that can be done, and you can do a lot up here. So, and, and we do. I mean, we're getting such a bad black eye here. Every meeting here, it's been back-to-back. It's, it's not as bad as what you all think they're trying to make it sound. But I just want to say, thanks for coming out tonight, and we're in good hands. We got some things to take care of. I agree. We get them behind us. We're going forward. We're a strong county, and we're going to stay strong. That's it.
Vice Chairman Leavens?
I want to echo Commissioner Hoffman's comments, Commissioner Lamore's comments. I want the public to know that this wasn't some subjective unilateral decision of the board here to exclude the public. This was on vice of legal counsel because it is an ongoing investigation, because there are things that may pose litigation, and because there's sensitive information and part of an investigation may or may not be true that could cause litigation for the, for the county, which is taxpayer dollars. This isn't some kind of avarice, some kind of closed-fisted, you know, it's, it's my ball and nobody else can play meanness. This is us following our procedure protocol and doing the right thing and carrying out our mission for transparency. So despite what some commissioners may be saying, it's disingenuous. This, this isn't an attempt of the members of this board keeping something from the public. This is us following our due diligence, taking it, you know, reasonable step by step, so that way when it is ready for the public, it'll be the, the whole picture, due diligence, vetted, and, and available. Next, I want to compliment the sheriff and his staff and that technology that they're using. That shooting occurred within a mile of my office. Needless to say, social media, it lit up. My staff was concerned more than you can measure, and then relieved with how quick this, and professionally, the situation is resolved. I've read my, my George Orwell. I'm not a fan of Big Brother, but this technology is available, and if it's vetted and due process is, is utilized, it would be, you know, unwise not to take advantage of it. And like the sheriff said, you can't afford another 100 deputies to do with these few cameras around the community is, is providing for our safety. The next, a couple of things were, you know, brought to our attention regarding possible breaches of policy with closed session, logging into. So I direct the, the chair to look into this. If there's something there prior to the, you know, the next meeting, if, if we need to take steps to, to address that, we should. And finally, ending a pause note, I'd like to recognize former Commissioner and Chairman Lamar Frederick that's in our attendance today. You should come when there's nice things.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Vice Chairman Leavens. I will pass. I will now ask for a motion to move into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved by Lamore, supported by Heinzerling. Are there questions or clarifications or comments on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Swartout?
No.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
No.
Commissioner Heinzerling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I believe we needed two-thirds of a vote on this, so the, the motion fails, 5-3. So now, I will now ask, I will now adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.